To just create more opportunities for collaboration and for the port to be living out its mission of economic development for all of Thurston County. So we're excited to have Holly here today with us. And Sam, is there anything else I need to do from a business perspective?
I don't think so. You don't really need to approve the agenda today because we just have one item that we're going to be going, so we can just get started.
Great. And then, so are we, do we know what time Commissioner IL will be joining us or is that TBD?
TBD.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So he'll, he'll, he'll log in as he becomes available.
Perfect.
Excellent. Okay.
Great.
Whew. Alrighty. Well, we have just a lot of, you know, I'm glad you started this meeting in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration. Amy, I'm right with you on that. I think, you know, I have such a huge passion for that. And yet, in all honesty, there is times where you have to work through stuff that is fairly tedious. All of your little mini processes. So, well, you know, that's a lot of what we have today. And I don't know, did you, Joe and Amy, did you all get a chance to look at the PowerPoint that came in late last night? So you can kind of see the, the things that we're going to be going over today. And a lot of it is just honestly looking at what are, what do you all want to confirm as your processes? If you have things that, where it's just like smooth sailing, yeah, this makes sense is what we want to do. If we had things where it doesn't seem clear, then we'll slow down, we'll kind of talk it through at least to get a shape, a sense of the shape of what the differences are. And then we can, you know, have another meeting and talk it through some more. So today is really just to kind of walk through both issues that had come up during my last time with you on the seventh. And then a couple of things that got flagged in our time with Anne. So really, this is your time to sort of process that through and make sure that you're all singing the same tune. The, I guess another thing I, I just wanted to mention is that, I don't know about you guys, but I have really seen a breadth of, in my, both in my own life, personally, from groups that I work with, but also as a professional, a really a breadth of experience in terms of, you know, groups and meetings that are crazy dysfunctional. And then things that are so much fun where you can, and sometimes when you talk, Amy, I get this feeling like where it just flows and it's easy and it's fun and it's productive and you're making a difference and it like, it feels amazing, right? And so when you have a taste of that, then you want more of that, you want to create that. And so I guess I just wanted to start by asking the two of you and, you know, Commissioner IL, when he gets on, have you guys been in meetings before where you've had that experience? Where you felt like, man, this group is rocking this, this meeting, these people, you know, when I'm with this group, I can really feel like we are collaborating well. Have you had, do you want to share? I thought we should just take a minute to, like, what was that? What group was it? And what was, what made it that way for you? Amy, do you want to start? This is our little check-in.
Well, I'm not just sucking up, but the first thing that came up for me was when Joe, or Commissioner Downing and Commissioner IL, before we got, we got to meet before we were commissioners. And I think that we all had, or I don't want to speak for us all. I had a feeling that we were having some of those synergies of just being excited about figuring out how to work together so that we could move things forward. And not that we would always agree and not that that's what it was about, but that it was about having civility and respect and process. So I think that would lead me to some of the other groups where it's really that fundamental trust and enough process and procedure so that everyone's clear of what to expect. And then having the trust to assume positive intent and I find that that allows people to be creative when they're not feeling nervous. So then you can come up with more interesting ideas. It seems like for me, that's how I feel and it seems like that works for others as well.
Yeah, here, here. Cool. Thank you. Joe, how about for you?
Well, first of all, thank you, Amy, for, you know, calling that out. You know, it's really important to get off to a good start and, you know, I think these, we three commissioners got off to a good start so far. And looking back, of course, I've been, you know, in a lot of different committees and it's kind of a continuum of harmonizing on one end and somewhat less harmonizing on the other end. And so, you know, I guess my favorite is the one, the committee that I've been on was on for five years straight, maybe six, the Visitor and Convention Bureau, because they were all very committed to, you know, a very singular and focused goal, which was, you know, kind of building tourism and visitation to Thurston County. So, you know, I feel good about that and, and the meetings were entertaining and people contributed in a big way at every meeting. So, you know, I would say, you know, in a positive, I don't want to say anything negative about, you know, other groups. But I'd just say the positive, that was a positive experience for me when you're in a meeting and everybody harmonizes, so.
Nice. Yeah.
Something Commissioner Downing said, it, the, having a focused goal, I feel like that is knowing what direction you're rowing in so that you can all I feel like that's really a vital component.
Yeah, I've got a couple of groups now that reese, that state their mission at the beginning now of each meeting. Like not to be redundant, but like, why are we here? Let's just say it again and it's on the agenda, you know? So it, it really does make a difference when you're clear on purpose. I've been doing a lot of reading about that too, of just how purpose, being clear on purpose makes such a difference in terms of what happens in any setting. For you personally as an individual and for a group. Sam, how about for you? What's a great meeting or group experience you've had and what made it, what made it great?
I believe it's where we first worked together, Holly, and that was working with the Food Co-op Board. And it was an introduction of, wow, there's a lot of opinions on a board like that. And, you know, when I was first elected, the meetings would typically last or so. And, you know, it was just kind of crazy and we really worked on how, what, what was essential to, to, to the business and got those meetings down to about an hour and a half. And we got a lot of things done. We adopted their first strategic plan of the organization and it was a large food co-op is like, you know, $14 million a year and and we just, and, and they didn't use Robert rules or, or anything and, but we just really focused on how are we going to conduct our business? How, and, and sidestepped all the, like, everybody just has to chime in with their version of, of yes. And, or, or their version of, of no to like, where do you stand? And so that was, that was a, a really good experience in shifting a group from being really dysfunctional to being actually very, very functional.
Yeah. That was, yeah, you described it really well. That was the first time Sam and I worked together and she was part of shifting that group. That was, just to give you a little context, that board was renowned throughout the United States as the worst food co-op boards of like many hundreds in the whole US. It had a reputation. They got a new executive director and Sam came on as the board president and turned that corner. But yeah, it, it was, it was known. All right. Well, let's jump in. We'll do this. Well, I go through stuff and um, yeah, just get as far as we get. I'm gonna slide share. Here we go. Share. Okay. So here we are. I'm joining you again. See, we're lost together on the seventh. And so you may recall, I'm going to go backwards for a minute so you can see what, where we've been and then we'll look again ahead to where we're going. So we started on February 2nd with the intro to strategic planning. I was with you on the seventh and we looked at commission relations, principles and practices. So just to kind of get a fundamental sense of how we are going to work together. Uh, February 9th, we had Anne come and worked with you on her, with her Jurassic Parliament process, routine, training, amazing stuff. And then here we are today. So we've got about two hours to talk through some of the rules resolution, potential edits based on the recommendations from various consultants. And also to pick up where we left off on February 7th to just talk about coordination, how we're coordinating our work. So the next, what happens after that is we have a couple more sessions that are going to help really establish a strong basis for the three of you, four of you really, if you count Sam. So March 14th, we've got the Rules Resolution Advisory. And then the Rules Resolution Action comes on the 28th. So basically everything that we talk about today, the staff will go ahead, put those into a draft form. Some of it's in, in a draft already. But we want to make sure we're on the right track or we need to make sure staff knows your intentions. And then you'll vote on March 28th. Then April, we don't know exactly the exact date, but then you'll work with Jim for your first strategic planning retreat. So he kind of gave you the setup for that, thinking about how to, you know, what's kind of strategic planning he anticipates and, and a little bit about his experience with ports and then we get started in April. So that's basically the flow of how we're getting all these pieces put together. So on that, with the process, we're going to use today. As I go through each of these components, and I think I've caught, I think I have them all. I am not 100% sure. So if there's things that I have missed, we want to make sure to flag those and get, come back to them. But otherwise, what we want to do is just do some head nods, like are these, is this what we want? You have different ideas for how it should go. And that will help inform staff so that they can actually get some drafts in writing for that March 14th session. So does that make sense, Joe? Amy, could we good on that? All right. So Amy, you're, you're, you're squinching your face. So are you?
Oh no, I, I was just writing, I was writing. Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Lovely. All right. So Rules Resolution, the whole first part is Rules Resolution. And since you've read this, I'm not going to be reading these screens aloud to you. You will be happy, happy to know. But I am going to ask for your opinion. So, but I, here's, here's the basic foundation. The Rules Resolution guides how you transact your business as the Port Commission. The last time it was updated was February 2022. Actually, you just did some minor updates to it. And now we've got another round. And when I started working with you all, this was, we did a lot of work on this and Joe can attest. There were some pretty intense conversations that happened with the commission to address some of the places where, where the commission was getting stuck on process. And we've worked through a lot of them and then we're, this is just now taking it a step forward. And I think, I don't know, Joe, what you would say, but I felt like we got maybe even 75% of the way there, which is still some, you know, wrestling to go. But I think we're, we're really dialing it in. I think we're, we're darn close. What, what's your sense?
I think it's a great document. There's a lot in here. We cover a lot of topics. And I'll just speak frankly, for change. That's a joke. Anyway, I'll speak frankly that because we have a new commission and because we have a new paradigm, let's face it, for at least two years. So for two years, at least, the three of us are going to be together. And then you never know, we might have five commissioners in two and a half years from now. Is that right? Yeah, two years from now. Anyway, so I think it's a good time to look at this and tweak it a little bit. Because some of these things such as Commissioner Chat, I know you, I don't want to steal your thunder. I know you're going to get to this, but you know, that was part of a certain constellation of commissioners. And I think it's time to revisit that. So that's just one example. So I think that, you know, this is a very important, I don't want to say foundational, what's the word I'm looking, operational document, because it covers, like you said, the operation of how we operate, you know, when we, when we meet. You know, who puts the agenda together, you know, when is their public comment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe. And I, I think you're right. I mean, it really does depend on the constellation of people that you have at the table. And then it also, really the goal here is, I think, to make the processes as strong and clear as possible so that the focus can be on getting the work done and not getting twisted into the process, right? Like that's, the process should be the vehicle for getting the work done and not become the work itself, ideally. All right. So agenda setting. I, you know, Anne spoke to us about the agenda setting process. I thought maybe since we have a moment, do you remember this part? She said, you know, we're going to go to how the agenda is prepared. But did you catch this piece that she had said? That in the Roberts Rules, you, it says that you, if you follow the standard order of business, you don't need to vote to adopt an agenda. How many, however many bodies do vote? Do you remember? Do you guys remember this part? And you're currently, your Rules Resolution is silent on this. It doesn't say whether or not you vote to approve, that you vote to approve your agenda. You do vote to change the agenda, I do believe, or that that would be considered standard practice. Do you have, do you have a thought or an opinion on this? I, in my work too, I've seen it go both ways. A lot of people are just like, we review the agenda. Unless there is something that somebody really wants to change, the group doesn't vote. What, what's your thought on this? Yeah, Joe?
Well, first of all, Amy, I'm talking to Amy now. It's hard for me to be who I am right now because I don't want to sound like a know-it-all. So pardon me if I sound like a know-it-all, because, you know, I'm coming into this with six years behind me. Okay, I keep falling back on that. So I just want to say that, you know, I like the way it's set up because quite often, I'm almost more often than not, we have a motion to amend the agenda. And then we go through that. And then we approve the overall agenda. So I'm perfectly fine with, you know, the way it's been operating. Because of the fact that, like I say, there's quite often some smaller, large change to the agenda.
Is that right, Joe? Do you often have changes to the agenda? Right now? Is that been your experience?
Well, Sam, Sam can back me up on this. I said, I said almost more than 50% of the time, do you disagree or agree, Sam, that at any given, not so much work session, but commission meeting? You know, it's quite often an amendment proposed to the agenda.
Yeah, I'd say it's not an uncommon occurrence at all for some changes to be made.
I would add, I don't have a strong opinion on the question you just raised and Commissioner Downing, I don't think you're no, being a know-it-all. I think you're just adding your experience, which is helpful for context. I feel like if we could create some predictability as far as process of setting the agendas so that those, the other commissioners, aside from the chair, felt like there was a clear process for having a topic being put on the agenda or communicating with the executive director in a way that would then be whatever is appropriate while respecting the Open Public Meetings Act so that the voices can be heard in the agenda setting, then there might be less modification of the agenda. But I don't have a strong opinion on whether it's an implicit vote or a an outright vote on the agenda if there's no changes made. And Holly, I just, did you see Commissioner IL has joined us? Welcome, Commissioner.
Hello, hello. Excuse my tardiness.
So glad you're here.
Me too.
Your timing is perfect. Well, we're, we're just moving into one of the first questions, which is not, it's not a big one, but I thought since Anne had brought it up, we might want to take a moment to see if you wanted to formally vote to approve your agenda at the beginning of your meetings, or if you wanted to only vote if there was a change to the agenda. Cause right now your Rules Resolution is silent on this. Do you have a feeling when?
I have an opinion. I've just always, I think every meeting I've ever been to, we voted to approve an agenda. So that's just what I'm used to doing.
Okay. And Joe, it sounds like that's what you've been doing now is voting to approve. And Amy, you sounded like for you, it's either way was fine.
Yeah, I've done both. I mean, it takes an extra minute. So sometimes it's just a time suck, but I don't have a strong opinion.
Good. Okay. So it sounds like, so gang, especially now, Commissioner IL, that you're here, what we're going to do is we just have a lot of, of process things to nail to the wall, if possible. So I'll just look for a head nod and then we'll move on to the next one. So it sounds like voting to approve the agenda. That's, that's, that's the preferred direction, correct? Okay. Wonderful. Great. So current Rules Resolution. So this, this brings up a point I'm going to, I'm going to try and hone in on and reinforce, which is, it's really, really helpful to always check on what you've already said. It's super common for any kind of commission or war to, to make it up, but forget, forget to look back on what was already decided. So there's a couple of things in, in terms of how the agenda is set that you've already, you've already declared, you've already identified the methodology. And a couple of things that we want to just refine. So part of this has actually already been defined and it's, it's highlighted in blue. So are there any questions about what's already here in the current Rules Resolution? Okay. So then we get to this other part and I want to say, this has to do with understanding the nature of how agendas get kind of created. So in a, in a well-functioning group, the way it'll work is you have something like this. You have an annual calendar so that every meeting, any one meeting is not just a one-off. It's part of a larger constellation, to use that word, of activities that are happening in the course of the organization's business. Things that staff were working on, sometimes for multiple months, that are, they're getting ready to bring it to you. Things that the commission knows a year in advance that that's what you're going to be doing in October. So a functional group will always have a really clearly defined, with some flexibility, a clearly defined schedule of the year that actually is the biggest driver of what happens on any given agenda. And so what you would see is the, is the president and the ED would first look to the, look to the calendar and say, what do we need to deal with? What had got left off from last meeting? And so it almost writes itself. Your agenda should almost write themselves. So this is, this is your, I think, a rough draft of your annual calendar. You know, for, you know, and they vary a little bit year to year. So Sam, do you, would you like to point anything out about this? The annual calendar?
Yeah. And I think Holly stated it well in that really looking at the workflow that repeats itself from year to year. So there are things that you just do the first meeting of January, which is elect your officers and you do your surplus inventory resolution. There are things that are by statute that you have to have a budget reported to the county auditor, I believe, or treasurer every year by a certain date. So that backs up your calendar when you need to have adoptions, et cetera. There are other provisions such as, right now, we have the separate body of which you are also board members, and that is the Port Economic Development Corporation. And so we have to have an annual meeting of that, that is typically scheduled in April. And so we'll have that coming up, though we're looking at some bylaw changes to it. So, so as Holly says, there's this kind of ebb and flow of work that goes throughout the year. Then of course, this doesn't reflect everything that we bring to you because all of the typical business items that come to the commission such as contracts or leases for ratification, those come as they, we get the deal solidified, we get all the parties on board, the documents are ready. And so I'm always then keeping a calendar of seeing how those are coming forward. Briefing you individually, I give you those two to three weeks look aheads. Here's what's coming down the pike. Knowing that those are always subject to change. And we had for, for next week's agenda, for example, we had some things that we believed were going to go on the consent calendar. Oh, at the last minute, we didn't get a signature. So now we need to pull that and postpone it to the, to the next calendar. So behind the scenes, we are running all of these business processes that then feed into, that then I'm, I'm trying to give all the commissioners a heads up of, here's what's in the pipeline. But then really working with the president to solidify, okay, this is going to be what we have ready for, for the agenda.
Okay. Makes sense, everybody? Questions about the annual calendar? Okay. So then, let's move on. So given that that's the backdrop, Amy, this is to your point about if we can get solid on how the agendas are created, then also, you know, then it'll easier to do our work. So I, I'm not going to read this out loud. Bob, did you get a chance to look at the PowerPoint before the session, perchance?
Yeah, I did look at it briefly, yeah.
Okay, great. So this is basically how regular business meetings are set up and then the work session. So the regular business meetings, again, they're based on the annual calendar and operational workflow. Any additional topics that you all think about, you know, or like, oh, I really want to talk about that thing. You can send those via email to the ED, the President ED meet to plan the agenda, considering all those factors. The president has the power, is empowered to make final decision on the agenda. And the ED manages the workflow with the staff to complete the analysis. Work sessions, we're going to talk about that more in a second, but those have, the, it's the time that you, I've, I've watched this a fair amount with this, this commission. But you end up, you know, creating this list of topics that feel really important to the commission that you know you want to talk about in the course of the year. And then those kind of get put on the, on the work session agenda as you have time and as they feel very relevant. See, you've got kind of a working list, laundry list of things you've, you've got collected. So the other way that they can typically get onto your magic list is they come up with the, at the other business section of your regular business meeting agendas. That's this, if you look, that's the time that those get offered. And with an affirmative vote, they get added to your work session list. And again, very similar, the president and the ED figure out the agenda for those. Okay. Is that, does that basic structure make sense to everybody? Any questions on this?
Are we going to get into additional items next?
Yeah, just, just the verbiage, I think, on this slide.
Yep.
Which I don't know if this, if this gets translated into recommended modifications to the resolution. I don't think I should say president makes final decision on agenda under regular business meetings or work session. I think I should say president proposes agenda because, because when we get to the meeting, unless we change our practice, we need a motion and a second to approve the agenda. So it's not an agenda until it's voted upon. So to say here that the president makes final decision on agenda, to me is inaccurate. And I think it should be, you could say president proposes final agenda. But maybe that's just a one word change, but I think it's more accurate.
Yeah, I think the intention of the slide, which is, I put this slide together, Joe, was that the executive director and the president are discussing and figuring out the agenda. But who actually has the authority to say, here's the agenda that will be presented on a given day? Or we'll go into the packet. It's actually the president's final decision. So they can negotiate, you know, they, you know, they're both there in the process. But you're correct in that it is the commission that actually has the final authority. Absolutely. The commission itself has the final authority over its agenda. Correcto, moono. Okay. Any other clarification? So, so noted. Yeah. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, let's get then to a higher, even higher level of detail. So Sam, did I miss a, yeah. Okay, we're going to talk about work sessions for a minute. So. So the text that's on the left is actually what's in your rules resolution. Text on the right is just the summary, and this would be a sample work session agenda. And so you would have, for example, these are actual things that are on your list right now. The tribal acknowledgement statement, destination waterfront, etc., button inlet update. So that's that's stuff that we know is current right now. See how those work? Now, it doesn't mean that every agenda would have all three, but the concept, at least in your rules resolution, is that you that's the kind of nature of the beast of what your work sessions would include. Questions on that or thoughts?
So are are these things that live somewhere coming from the private sector? We have a Google Doc and it's very accessible. One of the things that's been challenging for me is just knowing where the information lives. And some of my suggestions as far as process have a lot to do with that. What what is the current practice?
That's a great question. So what is the current practice in terms of where that lives? Like this list, the work session list, Amy?
Yeah, that's my question for Sam.
Yeah, so so we keep that in laser fish and we review that weekly at the at the staff level. And then what I have been doing for our one on one briefings is showing you the upcoming regular business meeting topics. And then I typically display this one in the in the work sessions. They say, here's our running list of topics and whether I have them scheduled or not.
And one of my questions for Valicia, which I have not yet, I was going to ask it at the, you know, retreat. And then is it possible that we have a shared document where we can not give our opinion on things, but put topics for discussion? Because my understanding of the OPMA is there is some one directional communication that is allowed. Or or does if that needs to be filtered through the staff, that's having it stored somewhere so that we could, for me, having it so that I can just go to it and know that it lives somewhere would be super helpful. Whether or not we can add to it or not, that's probably a separate question. But that would be helpful for me, both with work sessions and working on the process with agenda items.
Yeah, I would tell you that the topic of collaborative documents and public records is it's it's fraught from a from a legal perspective. That would be very difficult to have some place for that 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 you can see it regularly. I think that, you know, the the laser fish where we stored is not accessible to the commissioners and public. We are thinking about and working on a public facing portal, but that's probably some time in in the making. I can certainly include it as part of the regular one on one process. So I could just include that in. Here's a list of topics and here's the and just provide it to you on a weekly basis.
Yeah, I want to be respectful of organizational capacity. I think this might be a good opportunity to improve transparency with the public as well. If we had some more outward facing list of items that we were potentially going to discuss.
Go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Oh, I just gonna say, you know, I like that idea. Doesn't seem like it'd be that complicated, but just to to have that available so that we could see, a place where we could go where we could just pull up and say, oh, here are all the work sessions items, not necessarily scheduled, but out into the future.
As a citizen, it's been my experience that sometimes finding information is one of the hardest parts about being informed. And so as we continue to work on our communication strategy for the port, creating a more user friendly process for being an informed citizen, I think will really help with our relationship with the public.
Yeah, thanks. It's, you know, it also brings up that issue of the awkward, really the awkwardness of the OPMA regulations that that it keep, I I mean, I find it in my own life because I serve on a public body and and I always get surprised. I when you were asking that question, Amy, I was like, oh, my gosh, I've had that same feeling. Like for other boards, I can just have a nice Google Docs, right? I know where everything is, like I'm on three nonprofits, right? And then I get into my my county one and it's like you can't find flipping anything. It's so frustrating. So, yeah, I'm with you. It's really a different, it's really a different kettle of fish. Yeah. So what I'm hearing is Sam can make sure to keep you you all apprised of the what's on the list for work sessions when she meets with you one on one. And that over time, we can work on a more transparent system that can also be public facing with here, the kind of topics that we're we're thinking about.
It's one of the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Downey.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Evans. So while we have this slide in front of us and a related issue for me is that no number two, it says work sessions are an opportunity for staff to present topics for preliminary feedback that may be considered later at a regular business meeting. So the I'm sure the resolution said somewhere the concept of advisory and then action two weeks later. And in the past, sometimes I think we circumvent the advisory if we talked about it at a work session. And I think that, you know, we need to be as transparent as possible. So probably that should be indicated. We always have a safety valve when we can do an action other. We just put it on the agenda and deal with it that night. Because the action other is that safety valve. But other than that, for things that are not time sensitive, work session and advisory are two different things. And one does not substitute for the other, in my humble opinion. So.
That that's my understanding of what of what's so is that this does not, your work session is for more of these informal opportunities to give input. But it is not, it does not take the place of advisory. Correct, Joe? That's I'm understanding.
My thought, that's my thought.
Understanding too. Okay. Do you guys want to be called by your first names? Or do you want to call be called by commissioner your last name? What do you prefer when we're together?
Didn't we talk about this before? And we decided that the regular meetings, we would be, we would address each other as commissioner. But in the work sessions, it was a little less formal and we could go with first names.
Okay, we good on that?
I'm just trying to train myself because I'm a very informal person.
And you flip back and forth all the time. So you're the one who I keep like going, gosh, maybe.
I don't care. You can call me. You can call me Amos McFamous. But I'm trying to get better about it with the other commissioners. So.
Okay, well, we're gonna we're follow Bob's flow there, Bob's suggestion. So when we're in work sessions, we're going to use first names. If I'm when we're in regular business meetings, we use commissioner with the last name and I will follow suit. Okay, anything else on on this, on the work sessions? So again, my understanding is if I go back, that they get set, they get added to the list with an affirmative vote. I just went back a slide, everybody. Topics are added. This is at the other business section of your regular business meeting with an affirmative vote. Topics can be added to the work session list. This is what I believe your process is, then it goes on to the list, which Sam will make sure she's keeping running, making sure it's visible to you. And then that gets brought forward into the work sessions. Is everybody clear on this? Are we on the same page?
Yes, are we? I'm looking at your PowerPoint and I'm just, are we're going to talk about setting agenda items next.
That's next. Ready?
Yep.
Okay, Bob, ready? Okay, here we go. Alrighty, so this is the process timeline. Where I have to hop ahead here. This is how the packets get actually put together. There's another section here. Yeah, okay, so where did this go? Shoot, guys, I think I messed it up. Right, so I'm going to go back to this slide. The concept here is that really at any point, if you think of I if you think of, wow, I really feel like this is important and it should be on one of our business agendas, you would send the email to the executive director saying, I'd like this to be added to the agenda. Then the executive director is meeting with the commission president and they're looking at all these things, again, given the given this bigger context of the calendar and the workflow from staff that also is discussed. And then they work to confirm the agenda. That's confirm agenda topics with commission president. That should say the ED is, or my understanding is the ED is meeting with the commission president. So anything that you have emailed the ED would be coming to that Tuesday meeting. Got it? Then the the packet starting to get put together Friday, all the packet materials you do the coordinator, the commission president is approving the final agenda for, right? As Joe pointed out earlier, it's not like that that still the power lies within the body, within the body. But the final agenda that's going into the packet goes out, the ED makes sure everything is tickety poo. The packet gets published. And then you have these other pieces that get added on and clarified for for transparency. And then it lands at your meeting. So that's the basic flow with, and have I made it clear from from the way I understand it that you all are getting other ideas that you might want to have into your process for agenda topics?
I mean, this almost looks like we're setting the that setting the agenda two weeks before the meet.
Yeah. Yeah. And Sam, do you want to explain? Explain more about that?
Yeah, you 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 are almost, you're about 10 days ahead of time because then we're we're looking at then giving the staff time to be able to compile the information, do the analysis, etc. Oftentimes, there are topics, you know, we've already had had staff working on them. Now, I would also say that that's why I'm giving you, you know, two to three weeks look ahead to say, here's the things that we have coming. So I think commissioner wants to say, I'd really want to want to talk about the, you know, topic X. Then I can work with with the the president to say, okay, we think that we can get the analysis done and it will go on an agenda three weeks from now. Because that's, you know, so we're always constantly looking ahead to what's in the pipeline. What other kind of work do we have? That's my job is to to look at, you know, how much staff capacity of like, well, I know you want to talk about it at the next meeting, but I really I have these big other things that we're trying to finish. So can we can we postpone it by by two weeks? And that's the give and take that in particular, the the executive director and the board president are having is that we can match our capacity with the things that are in the pipeline.
Yeah, and that and that goes back to the timeline you showed a few slides ago of the annual annual scheduling of the those those main topics that have timelines on them or due dates on them. So I mean, I just, I'm just thinking of this, if this is a two week process, there's there's certain to be plenty of change along the way. But I I understand what we're going for here.
Yeah, Amy?
I I feel like one of the things as the non-chair and being new to all this is figuring out a way to communicate with an expectation, communicate expectations to the full commission while still being mindful of OPMA. So if I say, I want to talk about putting a baseball field on port property, Sam, tell Bob, I want to talk about that at the next meeting, that there is some predictability that Sam is going to either put it in a document that lives somewhere or respond and it's going to have like on what Sam sends out, it said, meeting topics that aren't going to be discussed. Bob is not talking about your baseball field, Amy. And but but I know that he saw it. I know that it was communicated, the loop has been closed. So I don't have to go, why aren't we talking about the baseball field? Sam, did you tell Bob? Like, so that so that we're taking some of that pressure off of Sam. Oh, you know, Sam is just the messenger on the, not that you're not doing lots of good work, Sam. But like, we we need to be the ones who are being responsible for the topics to some extent. And if we can have predictability of that expectation somehow, I think it would go a long way to not having it be so chaotic with the agenda setting. So I don't know what's reasonable, Sam. Can you can you respond to all of us and say, things we're not going to talk about this month? Or things that are Bob and I elected to punt on?
Or I think I think too that that is the question of what kind of topic is it? And so if you have an idea, I want to talk about baseball fields and I want to talk with them about general, how the community needs them, how the port might use them, then that's likely a work session topic. That is something that and then you can you can put out there in the other business section, say, I would like to add a work session topic to talk about baseball fields. Then it clearly goes on the list and we're tracking it. If you have an idea of, I want a baseball field to go at this specific parcel and I want staff to do a cost analysis for us and and I want some type of a, you know, a proposal that had, then then that becomes, I I believe, a topic for the regular business. Well, actually, I think it'd be probably be work session first. Does everybody want us to work on this? And then you see if if there's a majority of the commission or you're like, that's a great idea, Commissioner Evans, but there's not a second for that to to move forward. So that I think the difference is, do you want to talk about the idea? Or do you want to want to have a very specific proposal?
I totally get what you're saying. I think what I'm talking about is even one step back of it feels like you're just throwing something into the ether when you don't, when I don't know what your conversation with Bob was and I can't talk to Bob. So just like some structured way of following up on that. It like within seven days, I will tell you whether you, we're going to talk about your work session or agenda item. Because it's your and Bob's prerogative to whether or not you're going to put it on the agenda. And I feel like we'll just be disruptive of like, let's talk about, let's amend the motion or let's amend the agenda every single time if we don't feel like there's a predictable process.
It's really well described, Amy. Thank you for bringing that forward. Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
I think you brought up a good question, Amy. It's, you know, somewhat delicate when you have the chair and the executive director giving that first cut to agendas. And people are filtering. They look, for lack of better word, they're filtering agenda ideas that come from the other two commissioners, the non-chair commissioners. And I'm not so sure that filtering should take place. I mean, it's okay to, I think, engage the executive director to engage commissioner in conversation about that particular agenda item. But really, it comes down to, you know, if and if a commissioner wants to put forward a motion to amend an agenda and put something on the discussion, you know, whether it be for a work session or Monday meeting. I mean, the problem is that for me, the problem is there's no packet materials now. Back in the day, you know, somehow I got access to the template, which is an agenda item. And so you fill it in, blah, blah, blah. You know, and there's different categories and things you fill in, like, what do you want to talk about? What's the title? Who's proposing it? What's the effect on the budget? What's the effect on the environment, you know, etc., etc.? And, you know, one solution might be if a commissioner, any commissioner wants to put a packet item together by by a certain deadline, because you're publishing on Thursday. So some sort of deadline, then it goes in the packet. Whether or not it's part of the meeting or not, it's still in the packet and it's available. If Commissioner Evans comes to the meeting and makes a motion to amend and say, I want to talk about these ball fields, you know, and I want to hear what she has to say. I'll, you know, and I second the proposed amendment to the agenda. Now it's on the agenda and we've had a chance to see, you know, somewhat of our pack, something of our packet information. You know, somewhat of our pack, something of our packet information. Um, the other issue is, the more complex issue is when when uh. You know, we sit down with Sam and our one on one and somehow. You know, we may or may not convince her to, you know, get staff to put some materials together, but that's. That's unlikely, let's face it, because Sam and the chair have their. Idea of when things ought to come forward, so on and so forth. Um, a good example is, uh, you know, K G Y. K G Y was somewhat of an emerging issue and. You know, you might say it came close to being an agenda item, right now it's not on an agenda item, I won't go into it. But sometimes uh things come up from other commissioners that they think are important and. You know, they deserve uh some sort of airing, so so my suggestion after saying all that is that. Commissioners should be allowed to put material together and they go in the packet and then they may or may not. Get approved as part of the agenda for that upcoming meeting, so.
You know, it seems, yeah, Bob, do you have a?
Well, I was just gonna say that, you know, I I I do agree with Joe on that and if there's a uh and. An agenda item that a commissioner wants to have on a meeting. Um, you know, I'm 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 not likely to say no. You're, you know, you just because Amy wants to talk about ball fields, I and I don't feel like it, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow that on the agenda, that. That that's not something that, uh, you know, I would, I would uh um want to be doing. Um, if it's important enough to a commissioner to talk about, then yeah, we need to get it on the agenda, I can, you know, the only thing I think is maybe if there's a. Uh, you know, an a- agenda for the next meeting is packed and already we may not be able to get to it. And put it on for a a future meeting, but uh I'm with I'm with you, Joe, if it's important enough for a commissioner to talk about it, I I. I'd want it to be on the agenda.
I do feel like we have delegated authority to the chair and it's, we do have to pay deference to. The executive director and the chair, understanding the overall workload and setting the agenda based on that too. So this is a tension, that's where, um, how do you give all the commissioners a voice? So that things are being raised to the surface while not derailing the agenda by adding a bunch of items to it and not getting the things that are more vitally important.
It also seems like an issue, going back to the very beginning of our conversation of trust. Like trusting in your leaders that they're they're paying attention, trusting that they do honor your voice. And that you trust they're gonna be making good judgment calls. So it feels like there's a foundational issue here. Uh, I saw Rudy had his hand up, is that, can I call on Rudy? I can't even see it, like popped onto my screen and then it disappeared.
I think if Rudy has his hand up, then uh Tracy can move him over and it looks like here he comes. Yes, I did.
Rudy, do you want to?
Yes, hello commissioners, um. So I don't, um, I don't normally like to uh speak up at these meetings, I like to remain as anonymous as possible, but. Um, I did think, I did want to add just an additional point and and because you brought it up, Commissioner Evans. Uh, the the idea of ball fields, um, one, one, one of the things might be helpful too. Before you all attempt uh or request to put something on agenda. If you want to talk about ball fields and if there are ball fields in Lacey. Have, you know, have a, you know, invite Alan to the one on one with Commissioner or with the executive director Gimony. And and flush out, you know, the ideas and the information upfront so that. Um, you know, add it, it doesn't come up cold at a commission meeting. Where the staff is gonna try and go, well, I'll have to get back to you on that commissioner, or I'll have to research that and get back to you. Or if you want to talk about ball fields in Newmarket, you know, or at the airport, you know, talk, have a conversation with me so I can get. All the information to be able to answer those questions at a commission discussion, so that was just my my uh thought to add for that.
That's a really helpful point, Rudy. So if if I if I'm serving on the commission. I have a thing I really want to talk about, even though it's operational. I can say to Sam, Sam, I really want to know about this, I really want to have more information, I want to understand the potential of this issue. Or the problem, or I'm talking to a constituency and they have questions and that you can then direct them to staff. Get that right, because we're going through the that channel, make sure that you've got the right staff person to talk to them. And then they're getting getting more information right there. And then we can see, is it at the level, is it at the level and in the overall schemata of what the commission's work is? So I think um we've got that avenue, right? And we also have the avenue of being able to bring an idea through the action other to a work session. So that it can get fleshed out a little bit and then move its way into a regular business meeting. I think I think one of the hardest things uh for a board or a commission to do is remember. Is remember to stay at the governance level, governance level, which is long range, strategic, not reactive, not like. Woo, 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 and that's just bound governance, I'm gonna call it like I see it. I think that's not great governance when you're always in reaction, rather than really setting a long range direction. For your organization, so I'm gonna get on my high horse for a minute here, but I I do have a perspective on. When I see groups being really unified is when they're less reactive and ephemeral. So I think there is an issue of trust. Uh, I think there is understanding what the mechanisms are. Uh, and then I want to go back though to Amy's first point, because I think it's a really key one. Like I've shared that I have this idea, I really want to talk about it. How do I close the loop? It's a transparency issue and we know the relationship between transparency and trust, right? And I think if we can, like, these are all these different ways, but if we can get to that. Look, can we brainstorm on that point for a minute? Because I think that's really would resolve a lot of what the core issue is.
And just to add another prong, I feel like that same loop needs to be closed with the public. So whatever process we come up with, we need to replicate that with public um. Communication.
So like if I, if a member of the public says, I want to talk about, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, whatever, however, we set that structure up so that there, for me, it's just about expectations. So if the expectation is that Sam within thirty six hours or four weeks, whatever the expectation is, is going to respond with X, Y, or Z. Then when she does that, for me, that closes the loop, for me, it's just about that predictability of expectation and communication. I think it's very difficult for anyone who runs for office, likes to hear themselves talk, at least to a certain extent. And so it's very difficult having someone talk for you. Because you, for me, I it feels like, well, how do I know you're saying it exactly? Like, maybe Bob, maybe I need to tell Bob, you know, tell Bob about those ball fields, I'll talk to Rudy first, but.
And that's where I think that the beauty of the process, the process. The beauty of the process now is in, when you get to the other business, you can, you can make the pitch to the other two commissioners. I want to talk about ball fields and this is why, blah, blah, and I think we should have a have have a work session on it. Then, you know, you convince one or two of your other commissioners and then it's very clear that 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 it's, that it's. On on the list for the for the work sessions, so that's the 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 part that it. I mean, it's it's just bring bring it up and you can you can pitch your other commissioners, then there's no translation happening at at all. No, and and so that's where, you know, there 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 is a a mechanism for that right now. For the regular business session, for the regular business meetings. Because they tend to have very specific items of business that we are bringing for commission consideration. And eventually action, we sometimes do do advisories on on uh commission, like. Meetings, we're we're, no, that's gonna, I'm gonna be at a work session, but we will sometimes bring in people to brief you on the. Um, uh, aviation commission, for example, we might bring in a guest speaker. They, no action, uh, it it's not going to progress to any type of action. But most often, we are bringing things that are going to result in some type of a vote. So those things are much more regimented in in what goes on that a at agenda. The work sessions are really the way more informal part, where if you want to have a conversation. That that's the place to have the conversation. Because as I'm gonna quote Anne McFarlane, our business meeting is not a conversation, it is an order of 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 how you. Uh, transact your business, it just feels more formal. But for the work session, you you have a process right there and then you you don't, you need to use me as an intermediary.
I totally get you from the work session, it seems like it keeps coming up as far as the business meetings and the agenda. And so whether or not that's just that we need to come to agreement amongst ourselves as commissioners that we are. I I mean, I. Joe, maybe you want to speak to this as far as you were, you talked about the K G Y thing earlier. Would that have felt like something that could have been talked about in a work session? Or would that need to be on the agenda to be timely?
I think that the uh. There definitely a difference between a work session and a commission meeting, but sometimes. In order for something to be timely, you're gonna bring it to a uh. Commission meeting, I mean, I believe, and I'm going to, you can take this to the bank, that. I'm striving for two things with this new commission. I'm striving for a a good communication and we haven't got yet to the OPMA and how to communicate, but I've got some thoughts there. But I I would like to see just good communication and I would like to see uh. You know, I used, for years, I thought, how can the port be more transparent, but apparently we can. So I'm going to be working towards that end, so those are the two things you can take to the bank, I mean, this is my uh new attitude. So, you know, I think that if, in answer to your question, in one sentence, if if a commissioner feels like. You know, you can't wait for a work session, which we're about to change work sessions to once a month, then bring it to a commission meeting. And, you know, you just have to have the support of at least one of the commissioner and then we're, you know, we can talk about it. I mean, I think that's a. It's a hard line to know. You know, what's governance and what is operation and my my self-guidance is. If somebody brings it to my attention, I feel like I have to worry about it. You know, somebody brings it to my attention and and if I can't. Quote unquote, farm it out back to Sam or another uh director, then, you know, I just have to worry about it, so that's. That's my response.
Holly, would your recommendation as of a best best practice be that if another commissioner wants to amend a business meeting agenda? To include something that's operational, that that is not something that we support as a best practice?
Yeah, I I would. Hope that that commissioner would have talked to the executive director. And figured out what was going on internally, rather than bringing it forward. And the reason I say that is that. It's really, really easy to, for a commission to get sideswiped by the issue of the moment. And to be responding to the squeaky wheel, like, how many people, how many people do you represent in total?
Three hundred thousand?
Three hundred thousand, so you need to be conscious of the fact that you represent the whole of your constituency. And at any one given moment, somebody is gonna have a feeling about, I mean, we're gonna talk about about this later. But about the rent increase they got and if you were, if, so I think one of the challenges you face. As an elected official is to be responding to every single operational concern. That somebody brings to you and the practice for you is to say, go talk to staff. And to have the discipline and the wisdom to continue to return them to staff. Rather than taking, say, oh, I'll take care of you, I'll take up your charge, because then you get into, then people start to. The floodgates are open and you created a lot of work for your staff that they might not have really. Uh, had the time for. And that happens all the time, it won't just happen here for your commission, it happens everywhere. So that that if that answers your question, I think that's the dilemma.
Yeah, and that goes back to trust.
Yeah, yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Well, so. You know, so let's get back to K G Y for a second, use them as example without talking about K G Y, because it's not a. This is a retreat, but. The operational part of K G Y issue is responding to the. Let's see, okay, that's operations, um, the fact that it does come to the commission is evidenced by the fact that the commission. Doesn't approve but ratifies, and that's an important difference, so we ratify leases, meaning. Staff does the work, staff all set to go and and we really do rubber stamp it, meaning. You know, we like the work, boom, gone, done, and and those are on consent calendar, that's how, you know, somewhat routine they are. But with the K G Y, the reason why that became a uh policy issue or potentially, we haven't really talked about it yet. But the reason why it's a policy issue is because it's part of destination waterfront and it's part of North Bank and it's part of. Uh, land use and so those are things that the commission has been uh. Over the past two years, pretty heavily involved in, so, you know, that's just one of those gray issues and then. And so I just want to respond to Amy that, you know, not everything is is black and white, but, you know, I generally agree. That I I generally agree the operational issues should be covered. If a commissioner has an interest, they should be covered on a one on one with Sam and and port staff is, you know, off off to the races with those.
Mm hmm, and I, that's why at the end of our session today. I put together some slides for you that are really like, okay, what about when you're in those gray areas? How do you manage those? Because they they sometimes it's not clear. And so you have to, we have to face that fact, right? Just like you were saying, Joe. You have to, you have to deal with those moments where it's not totally clear. Okay, did we, are we, are we ready to move on with this? So. With a place for work sessions, is, oh, I don't think we are, so. Amy, if you have something that you really want to make sure gets on the agenda. You tell it to, and it's on the business meeting agenda, right? Something that you're looking, you have the annual calendar now and that probably will get updated and tweaked, I would imagine. You really, really feel like this is something that needs to get talked about. How, what would happen that would make you feel resolved on this issue? Why don't you just describe, let's let's make it up?
Uh, I think that it's less about the issue going on the agenda and more about. Having an expectation of how Sam is gonna communicate with us, either individually or as a group. About the communication for agenda items, so for instance, a potential idea is that. Within three days, Sam will respond to your request and say, yes, it's either gonna be. On the agenda at this time, this is what Bob and I talked about, or no, it's not. And that there was a closing of the loop. I I I'm a team player, I don't need everything that's important to me to be on the agenda, but for me, it's about knowing that. That it's not going to be or knowing that it is or.
Yeah, yeah, that that's really clearly stated, yeah, Sam, go ahead.
So, um. What 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 I do is I I I keep the spreadsheet of all the 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 meetings, both work sessions and regular business. And then I I I show those to each of the commissioners in the one on one, here's what I have on the list. Here's what I have in 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 the pipeline and so and and that's the opportunity to go, wait a minute, what about this thing that I brought up? Oh, yeah, I I'm sorry, I forgot to put that on the on the list or or that. I brought that to to Commissioner Iyal and he didn't, he didn't um, does not want to pursue it at this point. I also keep an an another list of of unassigned um. Uh, topics for for meetings, it's much smaller, because that's a much smaller. Kind of set of ideas that that come forward, so so that that is my intention behind. Constantly showing you every week, here's the list of topics, that's that's my intention is closing the loop to say. I've taken what I've heard from all three commissioners, what I've discussed with the president and and here's what I'm programming out. So if there's not, if you've told me something and it's not on there, then that's the opportunity to say, you know, to to flag it for me. So that that's the process that I've been using. So that that's the process that I've been using. I think that to to then kind of create an another process where. You know, I'm 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 trying to, you know, attract another interval when I'm doing that every week with with all three commissioners. And I think because of the interval of of the work, I'm I. I think that's that's responsive that, you know, if there is certainly an an emergency, I'm going to be talking with the. The the president and we can call a special meeting, we can call other things. But if it's the normal rhythm of of work. Then I'm hoping that that is a a responsive enough closing of the loop. Every week we look at what's on on the upcoming agendas.
Okay, yeah, if that works best for you, Sam, that's uh, fine. I was not trying to infer that something hasn't been happening. I'm just trying to figure out. Predictability moving forward. Um, so if that could live somewhere other than just being emailed to us on for our one on ones, for me, that would be helpful. That's just, I like being able to pull something up. Um. If that's not possible and it's only going to come in the form of in the context of our one on one, then. You're doing the best you can. So I, that's fine.
Thanks, Joe.
I mean. I kind of like where Amy's going with this and I'd just say that. Whether or not it can live somewhere in a public space, that'd be great and or, you know. Every Monday. Sam could send just send it out and so she doesn't have to remember to do it at each different one on one. Uh, just send it out once a week and just say, you know, here the work session items. Either date assigned or not assigned. And then also a column that says moved up or dropped or. Yeah, moved up, meaning it's more urgent or postponed or dropped. I mean, and then we can kind of see from week to week. The changes because as I recall in talking with Sam, you know, the work sessions go out. You know, at least a couple of months. And so it'd be good to see, you know, the changes and so forth. And so then, you know, we're just. Aware of what's going on because the work sessions are the uh. The front door to a new issue. So in other words, when there's a new issue. They go to the work session first and we start hashing them out and then they eventually get to uh, a commission meeting. That'd be my suggestion.
What one of the things that you will find that I um, will always ask you and maybe it's annoying that I'm always saying. What is your intention that you, what are you hoping to accomplish with putting this on on the agenda? And that's not me questioning you, your your intent. It's me trying to discern what is the the actual thing that you're you're trying to do. And so if you say, I want to have a discussion about it, that's clearly a work session topic. If it's, I think we need to to ratify this lease. Within two weeks, that that goes on 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 a regular business meeting. So if it's if it's an approval, if you actually, you know, have to make a motion, it's a resolution, it's some type of formal action. Then that goes, those are regular business meetings. If it's, I want to talk about the idea, I want to, I want to have a more. Then that goes on work sessions. And I think that. That's the way I try to elicit from from each of you individually to try to ascertain where you're at, what what you're trying to accomplish. So again, I go back to the ball fields. If it's, no, I want to talk about ball fields in general and how the port may or may not support that. If it's, I want to talk about this particular ball field and I think it needs to be remodeled, et cetera, that tells me something different.
You know, Amy, I think um. One of the things that that I'm hearing from this and kind of I'm really putting myself in in trying to. Sense of where I would be in your shoes where. I really want to make sure something gets on the agenda and I I'm feeling a desire and maybe I have a, you know, a member of the public who's calling me saying. You know, when are you going to talk about this? To make sure I know that there's been a feedback loop and I know where things land. And so I'm hearing two two thoughts here. One is that. I'm hearing this sense of we've got the calendar of the year, but could there be another document where we can kind of track these issues? And see where they are in the overall flow. Is that is that part of it? Yes, yeah, yep. And we know where it is and it's transparent. So Sam, I think that you and I should talk afterwards and make sure what is the system? By which that can happen. I think it would resolve a lot of the kind of like, where is that item? Um, and then the other thing is I I'm going to pop down because I feel like this might be the other piece of it. I'm going to pop back up. Uh, the agenda here for a second or the PowerPoint. Hold on slideshow. Oh darn it. Okay, I'm going to just scroll wildly. Hold on. That's this slide. Can you see the one that says communications? This came up at our session with Ann and sort of what's the response time? So we're going to talk more about this, but let's say there is an emergent issue and here it comes. And so the the suggestion that uh, I've offered here is. That everybody is using their point, port emails and cell phones, that there's an agreement to respond within forty eight hours during the business week. Like if you really have to know something from your executive director, I think that you need to be able to communicate. Seems to be and feel like you you've got a feedback loop. Uh, and then in a true emergency, you use a text and flag, we are having an emergency now. Something has exploded. In the facilities or in the press or whatever. And of course, there's a weekly one on one meeting, but if something is emergent, knowing that you're going to get a a feedback loop within forty eight hours. So I don't know if you guys, if it would be helpful to just kind of jump ahead to this one and take a break. But I feel like this might between having something that's transparent and then knowing that you're going to get a response and know that that's. That that feedback loop happened. How does that, how does that feel? Does that make sense? Will that? Kind of resolve that?
That I think that that's a, that's a great idea for for a lot of um, you know, questions or issues that might come up. But when pertaining to the agenda, I was just going to offer one more um, thought on on the agenda at least. There are certainly, there are boards and commissions, I assume that the. Um, setting the agenda is actually an agenda item. So before you close out a meeting. You, the the commission would, we would set the next agenda right there at that meeting. That way we would get your. Your ball field uh, your ball field suggestion. Uh, out in the open, it would be transparent to the public. We would all talk about it in in and we could set that agenda before we even. Close out our 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 regular meeting.
Mm hmm, Sam.
Sam?
Yeah, Thurston County, um, actually Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, they do that on a weekly basis. They actually have an agenda setting meeting. And they have a process where the staff brings up and says. Okay, here's the 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 topics that we have coming. They actually do, they were. What would be similar to our advisory in that session? So they make their their presentation. So their actually regular business meeting is very quick. They're not, they're 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 coming in by that point. Commissioners have asked their questions. They have had that that feedback. When it goes to the regular business um, meeting. It's it's lickety split. In that agenda setting meeting, then there's also, and this is where we we grab the the language specifically out of that of. If a commissioner wants to bring up a a topic that. Staff is not bringing forward as it's kind of normal way of doing business. This is something I want to talk about. Then they 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 put it forward to the board and then it it needs a second and a and a majority vote. So. The, you are absolutely correct, Commissioner. There are other bodies that do that. They typically take a um. And another meeting, I think we could uh, potentially do that in in the context of. Uh, at the end of our meetings and just say, okay, we're going to set the agenda for for from the next meeting. I think that could could work. I'd have to think through some of the. Mechanics of that, but um, there are absolutely bodies that do that.
Joe and and Amy, what do you think about that? Kind of moving towards that direction? How does that feel to you?
It's interesting, uh, not a bad idea, Bob, and uh. Don't think I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to be set in stone. I think that it's, you know. Like Sam says, operationally, you know, it forces you to think a whole two weeks ahead and. You know, we don't, don't really know for sure that we wouldn't have an advisory on some other issue in the intervening two weeks. Like some lease, let's say, or something is ready to go all of a sudden. And so we want to get that on the agenda and get it moving. So. You know, I like the idea in concept um. And but I just wouldn't want it to be set in stone and that would give us a jump on a. Giving people, other commissioners a chance to, you know, say, you know.
Well.
Talk about, you know.
Yeah, I I agree, Joe, and I think uh, one thing about it not being set in stone is, uh, you know, I I. I live by two rules and number one rule is everything is subject to change. So I, you know, we uh. Um, uh, if we did set the agenda, um, you know, at the end of our regular meetings for the next meeting, that doesn't mean we. It's not going to, it's going to be set in stone at that moment and and that's the way it's going to look when we get there. We can always uh. Uh, make uh, make some changes along the way.
Rudy, you just put your, uh, thank you, Bob. Rudy, you just put your camera back on. Is that an indication that you have?
It is, um, I'm, you know, you guys only have this this kind of meeting once or twice a year, so. I'm I'm going to go out on a limb and take my my chances here. Um. Uh, again, the staff is always trying to be as responsive to the port commission as as we can be. You saw in one of the previous slides how um, ten days or more in advance. We're preparing for a commission meeting. So I'll just give an example. On a Wednesday, I may go through the murder board, as we used to call them in the military, the murder board PowerPoint. In front of the rest of the team and everybody beats it up and I make the changes. And then that goes into the folder with the cover memo and whatever. And I am moved on to what's. Happening further down the line and I'm not actually going to look at that again, most likely. Until ten days later, when it comes up to the actual commission meeting. Because I'm already working on things that are somewhere down the line. So if if you're, if you're, the the other piece of this, if you're setting. An agenda at the end of a meeting for the next meeting. You don't have the the up to date information on outside business factors that could be or couldn't be affecting. You know, that particular thing like, you know, is the financing coming from the bank is the whatever approval or the title company or. Whatever those other things are. And so I I I would just think that, or I would just hope that. Maybe we could flush this out a little bit more uh, in a, in a, you know, a future discussion. Uh, to to figure out how to how to be best responsive to the port commission.
Well, if I, Rudy, thanks for, uh, thanks for that, but I I I really think that uh. Even having those extra couple of days by, you know, having the 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 commission tell you what we want on that on that agenda. To a full two weeks before the next meeting, that should just, that should be a benefit to the staff. That should be giving you more time and. And uh, and flushing out those things that, uh, you know, you can report back to us that, okay, hey, we don't know about the financing yet. We we're still working on that.
Well, the the only other response I give to that is if if I'm already have a have a work plan. That is is in motion, then and the court commission wants to have something else, then whatever it is I'm working on, something gets dropped off. Or or moved in order to take whatever new is coming, that's all. So I I'm just suggesting that. There there's there are other factors that come into play.
I'm, we're going to look at one more slide and then I think I'd like to suggest we just take a short break. Real quick break and then we're going to push through, but I I just want to. Go to, hold on, play from current slide. This is the amending agendas. And I did hear, can you guys see my screen right now? Yes, no, no, hold on. Slideshow, okay, you see the amending agendas one. I'm going to just, whoops, here we are. Okay, so as we've discussed already at the beginning of any meeting or work session, any commissioner may move to amend the agenda. It's important to bear in mind, a significant amount of planning and prep goes into each agenda. And amendments to the agenda generally mean that discussion will occur without preparatory materials and also that other commissioners will not have the opportunity to be prepared. So I heard you say that in uh, in this organization. About fifty percent of your attenders get amended. And I would just want to share with you and you can completely ignore this perspective and you can just say, we're an anomaly and we're. But I would say that that is not common. I would say that that is not common. I would say that. Uh, I don't know of another board or commission that has that level of change. So if I think it has to do with kind of how you want to run your business as a commission. And how much you want to be kind of more planful and, you know, thinking way ahead. And keeping staff with you or how much you want to be kind of responsive and more changeable. I think that's a style question. It may be something you just kind of explore and see what's right for you as a group. But I think it's important to bear in mind that every time you make a change. In what you do, it has it, it affects everybody else around you. It affects all your staff. So just kind of, I would just suggest you keep that in mind. And this isn't to lecture you because there's really good reasons for being responsive. And like you say, everything is subject to change, but I do want to, I do want to mark that that's an unusual thing that I'm noticing when I listen to you. Okay?
And and I feel like that goes back to something from. One of our previous sessions about the teeter totter of trust and structure. And I feel like that speaks, if we have a process that there is transparency and trust, we aren't going to need to modify the agenda. So I'm not married to any particular outcome of what that looks like. But I think we still don't have trust that we're all just trying to make it work better. We're not trying to criticize, we're not trying to say it's wrong, we're we're trying to make it work better so that we can. Waste less energy on the process and create more action.
Yeah, you're here. Okay. Are you guys ready to take just a five minute break? You can stretch because we have a bunch more to do. And we can just like see how this goes. We don't have to figure it all out. Right this minute, but we can know that we're trying to figure out how to really make sure we coordinate this well. You guys will work it out. Okay, let's take five. Ah, time flies when you're having fun. Told you so much process fun, just kidding. Okay, all right, friends, we ready? Joe? You feeling spicy?
Yep.
Excellent.
I gotta show you guys, I gotta show you guys this cup. So Myra's not home. Um, but uh, so this is Myra's cup and I get to use it. You, okay, who remembers that movie, The Elephant Man from a long time ago?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, look, look at this picture. Look at this. Isn't that great? I am not an animal. So anyway.
So perfect, all right, all right, gang, we need to keep moving. So I just want to reflect that the whole issue about how our agendas are informed. Confirmed and making sure that they're really built on clear communication and good trust among the the commissions. And commissioners and the president and the executive director and staff, that's what we're going to achieve. Where these are all just the machinations, but you will achieve it. And they will meet your needs. We're going to keep on going, okay? We've got a lot of stuff that I think you've all talked about and at least thought about. So we're going to try and be super efficient. If you are happy with these proposed rules, resolution changes, then I want you to give me like a big nod so that I can go good. If you're feeling some hesitation, let's at least get it out there. We may not solve it today. We probably won't, but at least we'll flag it. Okay? With me? Here we go. All right, we are now on two because it's four, uh, what time is it there? Four o'clock. Here we go, share. Okay. Slideshow, I don't know why my PowerPoint, oh, it's because you guys are at the top of the screen. Thanks. All right, there we go. We are now on to the next issue, potential change. This is the commissioner chat. The current, we have a current and then we have a recommendation to eliminate the commissioner chat. Is this something we've talked about why already? Is this something you can get behind? And you can go ahead and like, give me a nod. Yes, you can get behind that or no, I have concerns. Everybody, can I see your heads? Yes, I can get behind that. Oh, okay. Go ahead and, and let's talk about why. Go ahead, Bob, give a.
I know you want to get, I know you want to power through these things. And I know we've talked about this before, but I would like to, I, I would like to hear, hear exactly again, why, why we're considering this. And yes, please.
Yeah, good. Can we hear Sam why we're considering this change, please, in greater detail?
Um, yeah, if you go to the next slide, Holly. This is a really, oh, no, sorry. I guess it's a recommendation from, particularly from Anne McFarland Jurassic Parliament. And it's, and I want us to be clear, it's not that commissioners can't go out and chat. But you know, you can go out and talk, talk to anyone. It's that you're having a court supported meeting that appears to be that you are representing the port and it really is, in her opinion, very confusing to the public to have this, this other meeting with just one commissioner present. She's like, if you want to have additional work community workshops or listening sessions or things, do that with the entire commission. You know, you can do that, but to have it do solo, it's then people get the impression that what one commissioner is representing is actually the, the position of the, of the commission. And so she strongly recommends not having these, these kind of condoned commissioner chats. But instead, having a joint meeting with all of you present, if you want to have informal listening sessions or things, or have it be there, you are just, you're out meeting with your constituents, which you can do at any time.
Bob, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess it kind of answered my question. But yeah, it just, we, we can't be, we can't be handcuffed to be going out and talking to people.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Long as we're not, as long as that's not what, what the intent here is. Because I mean, you know, if you're, if, if we're going to go out and have coffee as a commission, then we're going to have to invite all 300,000 people in the county to to a coffee shop to have a, a, a coffee chat. So.
Yeah, not at all. It's, it's, for my understanding, it's that you could, you are absolutely free and encouraged to talk to your constituents at any time. It was more of, right? Am I understanding, Sam? I remember when you talked about this before.
Just, I just wanted to be clear on that. I'm good with it.
The biggest distinction for me was that the port wasn't providing us with materials or structure around that, but that we could be free to meet with whoever we wanted still.
Correct. Yeah, Joe, you had a thought on this too?
Well, I could go either way on this one. I, I don't see myself having commissioner chats. It's not on the horizon for me. But different commissioners, different motivations. We put a lot of work into this with the last commission of laying this out and especially exempting commissioners that were within their campaign season. So we, it wasn't for campaign purposes. You know? But so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, when it comes to, well, anyway, I'm going to defer to Amy and Bob on this one. I support whichever way you want to go. I would not get rid of it unless you're sure it doesn't apply to you. Because you're so new at being commissioners, you never know what you might want to do. And you know, the nice avenue, in spite of what Sam says about speaking with one voice, the nice avenue is that the port puts it out on their blast that you're going to have a commissioner chat at so and so location. They're not easy to do. I found them challenging because, you know, when you get the six or eight or 10 and 12 people, they have you know, they're going to make requests from you and it's challenging to fulfill those requests. So.
That's a helpful perspective. Okay, so the proposal to eliminate the commissioner chat forum. At this point, you're, where are you all at? Should, should staff go ahead and change, at least draft that change? Are you comfortable with that? And again, you can always.
I want to, I, I, I will be comfortable with it when I actually see the draft.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why don't we think on that? But I'm hearing, that was actually a super helpful way to put it. It's actually see the draft. So then you can vote it down if you don't like it, right? Oh, go ahead and, and see that. And I would say, talk to Sam more about this too, about, because I remember many conversations about this. Okay, beautiful. Potential change litigation report, article five, section eight, order of businessless litigation report, and then you can see the proposed change. So where are you guys at? You agree with that? Yeah, Joe, jump in.
So first of all, I'm so obtuse that I did not realize until a week ago that it was only the second meeting of every month that, you know, I don't remember, don't even remember voting on that and how that got in the resolution. But sure enough, it's there that we do a litigation report on the second regular meeting of the month. And then secondly, I'm not overall pleased with how we handled the litigation report in the past. I can just see Heather, meeting after meeting, saying no report. So there it is, litigation report, no report. But for 80% of the time I've been commissioner, there's been some legal action ongoing. So I mean, I think it's fair to the public to say litigation report. We're, we're continue to be sued by waste action projects. And the next step is discovery or whatever, or we, you know, we have an employee that's that's filed a complaint and it's being investigated. So I mean, I think that's transparency and I think that we haven't followed this. And so, you know, I'm not in favor of getting rid of it. And I think that, you know, I mean, subject to, you know, Felicia talking us out of it, you know, I think that a few words ought to be said for where we're at. And if it's a fine, beautiful day in Olympia, meaning there's no actions ongoing whatsoever against the port of Olympia, then we can say that. But, you know, and as I say, anyway, we've had issue after issue and it's just part of it's, you know, rationalizing to the public. You know, I mean, do you know, Holly, I bet you don't know this, and I bet you don't know an Amy, and I bet you don't know a Bob. Our premium for Endurus, which is one of our, you know, insurance companies against litigations, is in the neighborhood of $400,000 a year. I mean, that is a gigantic number. So litigation is not a small thing at the Port of Olympia.
Thanks, Joe. Amy or Bob, do you have thoughts that you want to share one way or the other?
Bob, do you want to go? You can go after you.
I was just gonna say, it's my understanding that the, if we took the litigation report off as a regular, as a regular item on, on one of, or one meeting a month, I guess. That doesn't mean we wouldn't report on litigation. We do have responsibility if there is a litigation going on to report that. Yeah. So I'm, I mean, I guess I'm kind of up in the air now after hearing Joe.
Thanks. Amy.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, appreciated Felicia's feedback. At the end of the day, it's going to be her discretion as to what she reports. If having this, we did hear some public comment that there, it makes it feel more transparent. And as Joe's saying, having it be a part of our meetings might help for that transparency piece. And Felicia will have the discretion to comment or not based on her legal expertise. So I don't have a strong opinion.
Okay.
I think it's a, it's a low lift. If we leave it on there, it's a low, there's not a huge burden on the staff. I don't think. It's just more of a procedural thing.
Okay.
Is that fair, Sam? That, that it's not a huge, okay?
Okay. Alrighty, so I'm hearing just sort of a, some reasons for keeping it on or keeping it as is. And maybe just some more thoughts hearing if there's any reasons to, to try and change that versus just letting it lie. We can hear from those later, from staff later. Okay. Good, public comment. So this is another point that Anne had brought up, that the commissioners not respond to public comment. And I, I want to flag that I know this is challenging. I, I chair, like I said, a public body and it's hard to simply listen and you do get better at it over time. That is the best practices for sure. But you know, of course, we've, we've had that in the past. And so this is what Anne has said. The POCAC made that same recommendation and there's a lot of reasons for it. I, we also know that we've got currently four public comment periods and allowing for commissioner responses. We know that this is unusual. And the proposal is to move closer to best practices, which would be one public comment period, and then eliminating the response and that aligns with best practices, speaking with one voice and really just showing up with your listening, which we had actually talked about a while ago. So that's a recommendation. Does that fit with you guys? Does that, do you like that? Or do you have concerns about going in that direction?
Well, I, I, I kind of have, I guess I had, I do have some reservation because I think, you know, even though we seem to get a pretty narrow group of, of folks who want to come and, and make, make comment. They, they certainly should be able to, to express their opinions and and you know, I'm, I'm speaking for myself and I, I know that I, I'd listened to all of the, all of the comments and, and certainly consider their, their points of view. I guess I'm, I'm a little worried if we, if we, it's not so much the commissioner response. I mean, you know, I, I, I wouldn't want to get, you know, in an, not an altercation, but you know, back and forth with over, over, over some comments or opinions that are expressed. But I think if, if we, if we reduce the number of, we reduce the number of opportunities for the public to talk, to give their opinions, it's going to, to give their comments. It's going to appear that we're we're not paying attention.
Amy or Joe, what are your, what are your thoughts here?
Joe, do you want to go?
I'm sure Amy, I'm just scrolling through the rules resolution that we're talking about. So we have the public comment at the beginning, and then we have public comment after advisory items, because that's the first time they show up. So people can talk specifically about those items. And then we have I think I skipped one. And then we have a public comment on action, other items, because they have not heretofore been in front of the public. So I, I count three places for public comment. And, you know, I'm okay with a public comment. I'm most leaving the public comment as it is because, you know, I kind of agree with Bob. I mean, I agree with myself, which is that, you know, I don't see any, I don't have any problem with people commenting on port commission business in those three areas. I am in favor of removing commissioner response to public comment. Because because you're really only speaking as one commissioner. So you're not really expressing the views of the commission. There's no way for you to do that. The only way for you to do that is by voting on things. That's how you express the will of the commission. So I would only say that, you know, I think that Anne McFarland said, you know, practice active listening, which is simply, you know, don't be looking at your notes or writing too much, or looking at your cell phone while people are giving public comment. So.
Yeah.
That's how I feel about that.
Thanks, Joe. Amy, how about for you?
Yeah, I, it feels odd to listen to people's comments without responding. But as Anne McFarland pointed out, it's not supposed to be a conversation. It's supposed to be a structured meeting. And I did run into someone giving me public feedback that they thought, because I was the only one who said anything, that I was speaking on behalf of the whole commission. And I, I responded that I most certainly am not. And I'm sorry that that's how it came off. So I think for me, that just was a real like ding of, you know, for us to speak with one voice, continuing to have these kind of side dialogues of our own opinion of what the public is saying, isn't necessarily helping us to conduct business. And as far as the additional public comment periods, my experience thus far is, it's not that the same people are giving the same comment over and over and over. It's usually unique feedback on the particular agenda items. So it hasn't been, it, it seemed like it has worked within the system, but I haven't been around very long. So I would defer to Joe. And if Joe is saying that it has worked well to have those additional public comment periods, I would be in support of Bob and Joe's desire to do that.
Thanks.
I think Lisa has her hand up.
Yeah.
Is there a fourth one that we don't know about? Or that I?
Yeah, that's a good question. Double check on that. So Lisa.
It's, it's at the end. So there's one at the beginning, one after action, other, one after advisory, and then again at the end.
Which is, the fourth one is optional though, Sam. The fourth one is like, yeah.
Right.
You know, once or twice you've used that. When you have some giant issue and people lined up, back when we used to meet in person, they're all over the place. And we would have 30 or 40 minutes of public comment at the beginning and then at the end of the meeting. You know, we keep on going with it. So, yeah.
Okay, so that last one is optional then. Yeah, I think. Okay, Lisa, you had your hand up.
Yeah. So one, one thing that, that is confusing, I think, what I've observed is confusing sometimes for people who are participating and, and and that is that the, the comment period at the beginning seems to be open to anything that people want to talk about, even those things that are on the agenda later, that they might be able to comment on later. And I think people get confused as to when they're supposed to provide public comment on an item, for example, that might be on a jet, on an agenda. One of the common practices I've seen in my experience with public boards, elected and appointed, is the, the public comment period at the beginning is specifically stated as for things that are not on the agenda. So in other words, if there's some topic that somebody wants you to know about, you know, why do I have to pay property taxes if, if I don't use any port services? That's something that they would say or, or provide comment on at the, at that beginning, public comment period. So right now, without any parameters around the purpose of each of the individual public comment periods, there is a little bit of a free for all kind of sense to it. And I think from, from public perspective, especially those people who maybe aren't coming to your meetings all the time and don't understand that they can, they have all these different options. It might be better or advisable to think about setting, at least set some boundaries around what the purpose of each of those individual comment periods is for. And at the beginning of the meeting, that open comment period should be about things that are not on the agenda, that people will have an opportunity to comment about later at that point.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, good idea. Good idea.
Again, I think it just comes back to transparency and expectations and helping the public to know what to expect, helping us to know what to expect. That's where we have a lot of room for improvement. So I think that's great feedback, Lisa.
Great. So I think what I'm hearing is the idea of maintaining the, the three or possibly four public comment periods, looking at the potential of helping the public understand what those different periods are for. Let's go back to this other element of the proposed change is to eliminate the commissioner response to public comment. And I think I heard both Amy and Joe say they And I think I heard both Amy and Joe say they were comfortable with that. And Amy, I'm really glad you shared that last story. Gee, that was helpful. Bob, where, where are you at with that? Does that align with your thinking about the? Okay. Great, excellent.
And I would love it if Bob or whoever the future chair was, you know, just kind of stated, we won't be responding individually. We care about you being here. Thank you for your feedback.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's what we, uh, that's what we talked about to it, that, at that previous meeting. So that's, that's, that's a great, great thing that we should, uh, we should implement there, Amy.
Yeah, and to thank everybody after everybody's offered comment to, like, really, you know, just honor that. Okay, this is the last one we have. This is just a confirmation because it came up. So we, this is not a proposed change. It's just an affirmation because if you remember when Ann McFarland was with us, she had said, I think that you do, or she said, I do recommend that you um, allow also your executive director to have the capacity to make a point of order. And yes, that is actually already in your rules, rules resolution. So that was just to close that loop right there. Okay. Okay. So, oh, sorry, friends, there's one more here. Yeah, Joe.
Can you go back one slide, please?
But.
So on the right, it said, on the left, it says, any commissioner or executive director may make a point of order if necessary. But then on the right, in the third bullet, we recommend that key staff be authorized also. So what are we going by? The executive director or key staff is my question?
So I think that, Holly, are you gonna, or Sam, are you gonna answer?
Yeah, so, um, how, uh, the previous commission interpreted Ann's recommendation of key staff was to make it the executive director. So on the right is Ann McFarland's recommendation, on the left is what's already in the rules, um, resolution.
Yep.
Okay, well, I, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna, you know, argue this point. Uh, a couple of members of the public, uh, reached out to me and said that, you know, Robert's rule says that the members of the body, meaning that in our case, the commissioners make points of order. But I think it's a moot point because, uh, you know, I don't really see that happening. Um, I think that either the executive director or, or, uh, any other director can raise their hand and be recognized. And, you know, if they have a disagreement with how things are going. But, you know, I generally think that the three commissioners should run the progress of the meeting. Um, in the past, we've had some, uh, bizarre comments coming from a commissioner and that, you know, beg the issue of, of, uh, points of order. So at times it got pretty nasty. I won't name names, but, um, those days are behind us.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. All right, let's move on. We actually do have one more here for a potential change to the rules resolution. So this is, um, uh, yeah, let's just share briefly. I know it, we're almost at the, at the time we need to wrap up. But what do you guys think of the, the, do it, where we have, so we, yeah. This is basically to, um, get rid of the red line system. And I think, Sam, do you want to just speak to kind of how we came to this and why this is being recommended?
Yeah, that, um, this was a last minute change that was made at the, um, last time that, that the commission updated the, the rules resolution. Again, Ann McFarland is, uh, recommending, uh, the process on the right, which is just, you know, and, and she, and this is what I'm very, very used to, is that there's kind of a courtesy copy that, that is sent out. Commissioners note any actual, um, errors of omission or errors of, of accuracy. And then they send, send those back. There's not a lot of word smithing. There's just, you know, did you get the vote wrong? Did you get the action wrong? Did you get, um, something about, you know, who presented something? So, some actual factual error. And, uh, then the, the minutes are put on the consent agenda. And then they're either, uh, approved or they're pulled off on the consent agenda. Then if there, a correction is offered, then it actually has to, the member, the commissioner offering has to say what was incorrect and offer the, the correction. What happens now is, or what had happened is that we'd get these kind of ambiguous, there might be two different comments on, in different colors on the track, changes. And then it became a very lengthy conversation about things that were really not all that related to the action minutes. So, um, Ann McFarland and, uh, and staff, so just make this easy. Send them out. If, if there's errors, uh, let us know, then we correct it. Put the, put it in the packet and then you voted up or, uh, you, you voted as part of the consent agenda.
How's that sound, gang?
I'm supportive, I'm supportive of this. Uh, let's face it, you know, their action minutes, they're factual. And if you see a mistake when you get your draft, you know, trust that staff will make the correction. And we're good to go. We don't need, in other words, we don't need to see a red line version approving that your change was made or somebody else's change was made. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Joe. Amy, Bob, thoughts on this?
Just for my clarification, are, are we, are we, are we suggesting that the changes would be, um, pointed out outside of the meeting, like prior to the meeting?
I think that, I, I think that they would either be incorporated or if, and, and the point of, um, is required in the rules resolution, that the commissioners say, here's the point, part on the tape, the timestamp on the tape. And this is where the vote actually happened, that if the, the commission coordinator who's putting these minutes somehow reads that tape differently and says, actually commissioner, I'm sorry to say, but no, there was, there was not a unanimous vote on this. It was clearly a two, two to one. Then she, they, they will call you back and let you know that and let you know that they were not incorporating your change.
Okay, so the minutes that are published.
Uh huh.
I, I'm still not clear. When are we, when are we suggesting that there may be, it may be an error and we're suggesting changes? Is that during the meeting that we're, because if it's on the consent calendar, there's no discussion about consent calendar, right?
Right, that, the, the commission coordinator sends them out, uh, in advance. So she sends them out to all the commissioners, says, please review, uh, please note any, any mistakes. Then, then she gets them, them back. If there's, if there's no, if, if there's no mistakes noted, they go in, um, as directly as, as she wrote them. If, and this did happen recently, it was not all that, that long ago, where all of us thought that there was a unanimous vote. But then somebody, a commissioner pointed out and said, no, it was a two to one vote. And we went back and listened to the tape and indeed that was correct. So, so it does happen.
Yeah, okay. So I, I guess I just, I just want to be clear that the corrections are made before they're published.
Correct. Thank you. So basically the, the change that would be put in the rules resolution, it would be to follow Ann's recommendation here on the right. Yeah, Amy, where, where are you at? Does this make sense to you? Yeah, thumbs up. Okay. So gang, it is, uh, time for us to wrap up. We have a couple more items that are just follow-up items from our session on the seventh. Uh, but I'm wondering if we, yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Well, unfortunately, uh, you know, I had two items that I was hoping we were going to get to and looks like we'll have to postpone to another work session. And for me, to me, as one commissioner, they're both pretty important. One is who can call? I mean, the resolution is silent on who can call for an executive session. And then who's the gatekeeper? Who decides that the commissioner's request falls within the exemption, the OPMA exemption for having a executive session. To me, that's really important. And so that's one item. And the other one is we talked around the issue of facilitating emails between commissioners. Um, and so how are we going to do that? I mean, what staff member is going to help us? When Commissioner Evans has got a thought about something or a piece of information? I mean, let's face it. I mean, I have to say that there's a lot of hand wrangling over the OPMA, but at the end of the day, does anybody know of anybody that's ever been fined five hundred dollars for violating OPMA? I do not know of a person. And that's the bottom line. It says right at the bottom, the OPMA. If you violate this OPMA willingly, you're going to get a five hundred dollar fine. And so then we know we've reached the, you know, the attention of whoever it is, and we've gone too far. But I mean, the OPMA was created in nineteen seventy-one. We didn't have emails back then. So all, there's a lot of speculating about how the OPMA works, which is all it is, is speculating. So, you know, I really like to have a conversation about facilitating emails between commissioners because I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. If they want to share some information, you know, I just got done with the TRPC. Here's my two paragraph summary that I'm so excited. I can't wait for the next commission meeting. And we send that to somebody and then it comes out to the other commissioners. I mean, I mean, well, and that, the whole, whole thing about informational is also made up. The OPMA, OPMA is silent on what's informational and what's an opinion. The OPMA says you may not have dialogue outside of commission meetings. They don't even use the word email. So, but to be safe, I can't write to Commissioner IL and say, Bob, what do you think about this? Please write me back. That'd be a giant no-no. That's obvious. That's a conversation. And that's doing court business outside of a business meeting. But I can say, Bob, you know, I'd like you to know that I still believe the earth is flat. You know, please just remember that when I tell you that. And then he doesn't respond. And is that legal? So I'm, I'm, I'm talking too much. But anyway, there's two agenda items that we didn't get to today.
Great. Thanks, Joe. So what I'd like to do is suggest, we have a couple other slides that we haven't discussed yet, although I did flag one of those earlier. Um, Joe's flagged a couple other issues that he'd like to talk about. Amy or Bob, are there other things that you feel like you'd like to talk about more that we didn't get to today? Just see if we can, you, you don't have to go into and don't respond to Joe right now. Those so noted, flagged, we need to come back to those. Uh, Bob or Amy, anything, and you can think of things later. You don't have to think of them right now. But anything off the top of your head that you know you'd like to address in a future conversation?
Uh, well, one thing I was thinking about, and sorry, Amy, I jumped in there. I, I should let you go first, but, um, uh, one, one thing I've been thinking about, and I know that, you know, this has been a, um, with two new commissioners and, you know, the, the state of the world, you know, being, taking office right, uh, during a, a global pandemic, it's, it's made things a little bit more difficult. Um, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, uh, because we didn't have the opportunity to do the retreat to, to cover a lot of these items. And so now we're kind of filling those things in here. And, and here we're two, almost two thirds of the way through the first quarter of the year. And, you know, I really feel like we really haven't got down to the meat potatoes of the business, uh, aspect of, uh, of, of the port of Olympia. Um, so, you know, I think, I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, um, hopefully soon, um, hopefully sooner than later, we're going to be able to get back to in-person meetings. Uh, but also, um, some, some of the content of the meetings too. I, I think, uh, uh, I would personally like to get more reports, operational type reports, updates on, um, on the different aspects of the business, on the marine terminal, on the, on the airport, on the, uh, real estate, you know, more in-depth. Um, and I, I know we've got staffing issues and I know finance is really under the gun and they've got, they've got more work than, than they don't have enough people to do all the work. And so we haven't seen financials for, for a long time. So, uh, if there's just some way that we can be, um, if there's some way that we can get some kind of reports on exactly how these businesses and how these enterprises are doing so that we can, you know, we know how they're doing, right? You know, I've heard the marine terminal had a really good last six months of last year, but I, I don't have any evidence of that. You know, I'm, I'm only hearing that. So, uh, that, that was one of the things I would like to bring up.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, Amy?
Yep, I agree with everything Joe and Bob have said, uh, trying to be patient with capacity, given where everyone's at. Uh, also just, we do need to start digging into some of those operate, not getting into the operations, but we can't set, set strategic goals and we can't all be rowing in the same direction if we don't know where we're going. And we still don't know where we're going. And it feels like to me, um, so, and I think all this, all of the structure is super important and continuing to figure out how to build trust. Um, but we're building the plane while we're flying and, uh, we need to start taking a multi-pronged approach to building trust while starting to address some of these budget. I mean, I would love to get into the financials and the budget and the business lines. Um, because that's where we can offer meaningful strategy and support to Sam and the rest of the, of, of, of the team and, um, and, and learn how to practice not getting into the operations and just looking at the strategy. Um, but we need to do our job, which is strategy and, uh, making sure we're profitable and, uh, executing on our mission. So.
Yeah, you guys are going to do great. Okay, I flagged those things. Uh, also, when you do get into that, those gray areas, uh, just pay attention to those last couple slides I put in there because I think that'll be helpful for you. And I, so Sam, any closing comments for you? Because otherwise I think we need to wrap it up. We have a couple of good, great discussions today. You guys really are fun. I have the best time listening to you. You're really, it's such a pleasure. I think you're, you're great thinkers and, uh, I look forward to seeing you again on the flip side. So good work. You did great.
You stole my line. I gotta say, once again, I love you, Bob. I love you, Amy.
Aha, nicely done. Okay.
I like you, Holly, and I like you, Sam. So there you go.
You need to spread that love, Joe. I don't accept that. I wouldn't be.
Yesterday's slice. You're the best. Look, he put his camera on just for me.
I just want to remind everyone, it's two twenty-two, twenty-two. So there's all sorts of possibilities.
Yay. Okay, Lisa and Tracy, turn the cameras on. We're going to have a moment of two twenty-two, twenty-two together.
I would like to just go on record, the first time Rudy has meditated in a public meeting.
And I just want to note that my, my son's twin sister, and I will let you all figure that out. She not only is it her birthday today, she's turning twenty-two.
Oh.
Oh, my goodness.
Outstanding.
Twenty-two on two twenty-two, twenty-two.
To remember this one forever.
That's.
All right, great work. Good to see you all and, uh, take care, be well.
Thanks, Holly. Good job.
Thank you. Good job.